Amy Ramon, the President of the St. Paul City Council.
I'm Lisa Bender from Ward 10, also the President of the Minneapolis City Council.
I'm Jeremy Schrader, a council member for Ward 11. I also serve with Pam on the Clean Energy Partnership.
It's great to have everybody up here. It's nice to see people from St. Paul, Minneapolis, sitting together here, interested in the same topic. And we're so glad you accepted the invitation to come and join us. I'm going to let staff start out the presentation. If you want to give us any advice about when to ask questions and when not to, we'll take that advice. But I generally encourage folks to feel free to ask questions along the way. If you're like me, sometimes you forget the big question when you wait too long till the end of it. But go ahead.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon, council members and city St. Paul guests. Thanks for being here today to have a study session on inclusive financing. My name is Luke Collencamp. I'm in the City Coordinator's Office, or the Division of Sustainability. And we're also joined here today by Ellen Anderson at the Energy Transition Lab at the University of Minnesota, and Harlan Blackman of the Energy Efficiency Institute. And I'd welcome you to ask questions as we go along. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about energy cost burden and its relationship to housing affordability, which is a very important issue, as we all know right now. The impacts of residential energy consumption go well beyond the known climate environmental impacts that you've heard my office and my colleagues talk about much over the last few years. And for many families, especially low-income families, the majority of household income goes towards rent and mortgages, transportation, and energy as well. So it's a very important contributor to overall housing affordability. One of the ways we measure affordability is through home energy burden. And that's essentially the percentage that a household is spending of their income on their utility costs. And a recent study by the American Council for Energy Efficient Economy has shown that in Minneapolis, that energy cost burden is about 2.3% on average. However, we see in different groups that that's much higher. For instance, low-income households, that cost burden's over 5%. African-American households, over 4%. And Latino households, over 3%. So there are different areas of the population that are definitely seeing a higher energy cost burden than the median burden across the entire community. And in addition, an interesting finding about this is that those low-income households, renters, African-American households and Latino households, are paying more for their utilities than average household on a per-square-footage basis. And what that actually means is that they actually are residing in less efficient housing. So this isn't just a matter of discussion on incomes for households, but it's also a matter that those in those lower incomes or those groups are also in less efficient housing overall. And that's why they're paying a higher energy cost burden. And there are many cost-effective energy efficiency and weatherization measures that exist that can help alleviate that burden. However, many of those do require upfront capital or financing to make those investments possible. This obviously is an issue that we've been thinking about for some time. In fact, it originated in our Climate Action Plan, where the city council adopted the strategy to develop tools to finance energy efficiency and renewable energy retrofits for commercial buildings and residential buildings, and that those tools have low barriers to entry and limited risk for local government. On this strategy, the Climate Action Plan goes further to say that property assessed financing, on-bill financing, and other financial mechanisms could provide low-interest financing opportunities for homeowners and commercial properties. However, high interest rates, the need for perfect credit, and complex program designs can all be barriers to widespread adoption of these programs, especially for the low-income households we just showed have a high energy cost burden. And that a well-designed strategy or program should include a -- should maximize participation of groups and provide access to all housing types and income levels. And that the city should identify and develop tools that provide more opportunities for energy efficiency and renewable energy financing. To help make the strategies identified in the Climate Action Plan possible, not just the strategy, but many others, the city has formed the Clean Energy Partnership with our partners, Excel Energy and CenterPoint Energy. This was formed in 2014 as a commitment to cooperate towards achieving the city's climate energy goals. And in particular, we also are looking at realizing our energy vision for 2040, which is providing reliable, affordable, local, and clean energy services to our Minneapolis homes, businesses, institutions. And I'd like to recognize Excel Energy and CenterPoint Energy for joining us here in the room today. To help focus again on this inclusive financing element, we've created some work plan activities in our current work plan. There's our 2017 and 2018 work plan. And one of those particular activities is implementing, or rather, CenterPoint will be implementing, an on-bill loan repayment project, which will enable CenterPoint customers to finance energy efficiency improvements through the utility bill. And the Clean Energy Partnership Board, of which we have a few members here today, has heard some updates recently that that project by CenterPoint Energy is on track. And they're expecting a soft launch in late 2018, and then a full launch in early 2019. And furthermore, another activity in that Clean Energy Partnership work plan says that Excel Energy will work with CenterPoint Energy beginning six months after the CenterPoint Energy tool has rolled out, or after CenterPoint Energy has rolled out its on-bill repayment program, to assess CenterPoint Energy's experience with the program in order to determine next steps. So we thank the utilities for their cooperation on this subject as well. Even more recently, the Clean Energy Partnership has established three central priorities for our work in this coming year and years to follow. And this work will help us guide and focus our efforts coming up. Of those three priorities, one of which is making more clean energy, that is renewable energy, energy efficiency, accessible and available through new inclusive financing tools. Our other priorities are also to lower energy consumption and maximize energy efficiency in all of our building sectors, as well as making the city more sustainable and resilient through our increased local renewable energy A step that we'll be taking soon, in terms of inclusive financing, is creating a study, or rather, co-funding a study. And this study actually originated as an idea in the Partnership's Energy Vision Advisory Committee. They identified this as a very important subject to look into further, and also as a way to -- it's one of the important programs to spend franchise fee money on. So in 2018, we'll be collaborating on this feasibility and market study related to a pay-as-you-save system, or a similar on-bill financing program, to be implemented in Minneapolis. And this, again, is made possible by the franchise fee increase that was adopted last year, and that increased funding is coming in this year. And also, this program will be utilizing funding from other organizations, and will be able to partner with other Minnesota cities and subject matter experts. One of those subject matter experts being the University of Minnesota's Energy Transition Lab, from which we have Ellen Anderson here today. And Ellen Anderson is currently the Executive Director of the Energy Transition Lab. Prior to this role, Ellen was a senior advisor on energy environmental policy to Governor Mark Dayton, and also served as Chair of the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission. Additionally, Ellen served in the Minnesota Senate from 1993 to 2011, where she chaired the Jobs and Energy Committee Development Committee, the Commerce Committee, the Energy and Telecommunications Committee, and the Environment, Energy, and Natural Resources Finance Committee. So she is, I think, very well-versed in the subject, and we're looking forward to hearing more from her. And in addition to this role at the Energy Transition Lab currently, Ellen serves as a member of the Citizens League Electrical Energy Study Committee, and an observer to the E21 Project on the new utility business models. And she also serves on the advisory boards of the University of Minnesota's Joint Degree Program in Law, Science, and Technology, and the Will Steger Foundation. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ellen Anderson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Luke. And greetings, council members. It's a pleasure to be here with you. And I think I need to update my bio, because I don't think that Citizens League Committee exists anymore. Sorry, not your fault, mine. So I apologize for that. So, thank you. I'm just going to speak briefly and talk about what the role of the Energy Transition Lab would be in this study moving forward that Luke described. And then the next speaker will go into more analysis in detail about the idea of inclusive energy finance. So, Energy Transition Lab is a program at the University of Minnesota that I direct. We work in collaboration with many, many stakeholders. We try to connect university experts across a lot of disciplines, with people working on energy all across Minnesota in particular, but beyond, but in service of our land grant mission, trying to really help advance our transformation to an energy system that is low-carbon, resilient, equitable, and the other outcomes that we desire. Some of the -- just quickly, some of the examples of what we work on, we've done a lot of work on energy storage and did an analysis last year on using solar and storage as an alternative to natural gas peaking plants. We work on the Logo Pep Project with many partners, helping cities in the metro area, smaller cities, work on energy and climate solutions. And we are part of a team that's working to help develop the idea of a microgrid in North Minneapolis, which some of you may be aware of. So for us, one of our core values is that, just as the city's is, and I'm sure St. Paul's is as well, is equity in our energy system and in our energy transition. We're very well aware that as we try to transform our energy system and make it better, we need all people to be part of that process. We won't be successful otherwise. And we don't want to embed inequities in our new improved energy system that we're building together. So we're really interested in looking for solutions for low-income customers, so they can participate meaningfully in the clean energy economy. And that's what drives our interest in participating in this particular study. So, as I'm sure you all know, Minnesota has an excellent track record in energy efficiency work. But one of the hardest pieces of that is really responding to the needs of low-income communities, who often pay a higher percent of their income on energy, as Luke laid out. So that is a high priority for our cities and our state. So we see inclusive financing as having high potential as a potential strategy to address that. But we think that we need to have a study to really know if it would work well in Minnesota, and to analyze it, and to do some objective and well-vetted research to help us understand how it could affect both customers, utilities, and those customer, other ratepayers that aren't low-income, especially in different utility jurisdictions. So we are looking at, the scope would be about on-bill financing that has a particular focus on avoiding credit risk issues, so that all people could be eligible for participation if they have credit risk issues. A lot of work has been done in this area, but mostly it's been in co-op territories and mostly in more southern states. And so there's some very important questions to ask about climatic differences. Will this kind of approach work well in the state of Minnesota with our cold climate? Are there opportunities? And are they cost-effective? Those are really the questions we seek to answer with this study. And of course, every state has different rules and laws relating to energy and conservation improvement programs, et cetera. We envision the study, it would certainly include gas and electric utilities. We are grateful that the McKnight Foundation, as well as the City of Minneapolis, has committed to funding this study. And we're still looking for perhaps one other funding partner. And our intention would be to contract with a consultant who really has expertise on this particular type of analysis. And we would work with them. And I can talk in more detail about what the analysis would include. But to keep to my five minutes, I'll save that for questions. But I'll just jump ahead to kind of what we can expect as a result of this study. I think part of the scoping would be to choose different utilities across the state of Minnesota, some IOUs, some co-ops, some unis. I don't know if you know, but the City of Warren is here, a small town that has a municipal utility that's here. I was excited to hear that they're interested in participating in this. And of course, gas and electric utilities need to be part of this conversation. And as a result, we'd have a tool that would really evaluate opportunities and the financial impacts, both on low-income customers and utilities, and then as well to look at what the impact would be to the broader ratepayers. How we would do this is through convening and collaboration with many stakeholders. We would intend to set up an advisory committee of key stakeholders that would participate in doing a formal scoping of the study and getting into detail with the consultant on that. And we expect the study would last about three months. And we would intend to have this advisory group that would include community members, officials from the city or other participants in this discussion process, community members, et cetera. And we want it to be transparent and inclusive as a process. So we would meet probably on a monthly basis, this advisory committee, with the consultant who's doing the modeling work, and make sure that the data and assumptions are vetted and understood clearly by everyone involved. Because our goal is to have an end result, a study that will be trusted and seen as neutral for all participants, so that it is of value for all of us to look at and see where it leads us next. We're hoping, especially to have the utilities participate, because sharing data, utility data, will really make this study work and come up with more accurate and useful and robust results. So that's essentially it. I'd be happy to take any questions about this.
So I do have a couple of questions. What's the geographic area that you're going to be studying?
So, council member, that hasn't been determined. But certainly, the city of Minneapolis would be part of it. As I said, we would look at different utilities in different parts of the state. So, including some IOUs, co-ops, and unis. But probably, I'm guessing, probably a couple of IOU areas, and at least one co-op and one municipal utility. And I'm not sure how much geography of those, each of those utility jurisdictions we could cover in this study. You know, it would have to have a limited scope and size.
I'm just curious also if St. Paul could be included in the study potentially, in looking at that geography. If the Twin Cities did, or Metro had some kind of a program together, I think it would make a bigger difference. I'm also curious about, you kind of mentioned the impact on low-income customers and all the ratepayers. Are you going to be thinking about this in bigger terms, and like, what kind of impact this potentially could have on fossil fuel emissions or not, and what participation levels we might expect, and those kinds of things?
Yeah, that's a great question. We absolutely would consider what opportunities an ideal model, an ideal financial model would bring to low-income customers to participate in clean energy improvements, whether that's building envelope improvements, weatherization, appliance upgrades, renewable energy deployment on-site, substitution of different kinds of heating technology for conventional legacy heating technologies. And so absolutely, the goal would be to enable low-income residents to have access to some of those in a way that was affordable and financially viable. And I don't know if we can include, you know, the carbon reduction potential benefit, but that's a great, that would be a great addition to this study. And if we can add that to our scope, I would be really excited about that. So we'll just have to see if the funding permits that. But I think that's a great suggestion.
I would be too. And I think that would help the guests get excited about it. Also, it seems to me that a pay-as-you-save model is something that could be very appealing to anybody, regardless of your income. It's a different way. You're not taking on, you know, debt. I mean, it's a different way to finance items. And hopefully, you'll be studying a little bit about what you think, if the opportunity was there, what would the usage actually be. And I don't know, surveying a little or getting some impact, because I think that will let us know what potential it really has to reduce carbon and save costs also on all the customers. So.
That's great. Thank you. That's really helpful feedback and good suggestions.
Now, I'll just remind everybody that this is being broadcast and taped. But also, if anybody wants to see the PowerPoints and the presentations, they can go online. And they're all available on the city's website. And if you folks have a question up here, you can just take your little card here and stand it up like that, and then I can recognize you. And if that doesn't work, just bang it on the table or shout at me. And I'm not seeing any other questions right now. So I think we're ready to move on to the next phase. But thank you so much.
Thank you so much, council members. And I will be here throughout the proceeding in case you have any follow-up.
Excellent. Are you going to segue Luke, or should we just welcome Harlan up?
Yes, we will. In one second, I think before Harlan comes up here, we have a quick video to share as well. While we're playing that, Harlan, you can get some.
Okay, what fun.
Your home could be fixed up, so that you're cool in the middle of summer, and nice and warm in the dead of winter. And you have more money every year for things you need. Your electric utility can make it possible. Here's how. First, they send a certified contractor to your home to see what energy efficiency improvements can be made to lower your electric bill. Then, your utility pays for improvements like replacing old energy guzzling equipment and sealing up your home or apartment against the heat and cold. You end up with a more comfy and healthy home, and your electric bill goes down because you're not using as much energy. The utility recovers its costs for the upgrades through a charge on your bill, but the charge is less than the savings, so your bill is still lower. There are no loans, no credit checks, and no debt. And everyone can participate, even if you rent instead of own your place. If you move, the charges and the savings simply apply to the next folks moving in. Easy, right? It's called pay-as-you-save. It's an on-bill financing model, and it's catching on with electric cooperatives leading the way. Call your electric utility today to ask if they provide home energy efficiency improvements financed on your electric bill. And if they don't, let them know. It's time to start.
Good afternoon.
I'm intimidated by these mics, so I'd like some sort of sign that you can either hear me, or I should turn them off. Is this okay?
We can hear just fine. Just relax, and they'll pick up whatever you're saying.
That's good. I'm president of the Energy Efficiency Institute. We're the creators of the pay-as-you-save system. And I thank the council for the opportunity to talk with you today about inclusive financing. Dr. Hummel, and I think Tammy Agard spoke with some of you about inclusive financing and PACE. My purpose is to provide you with more detailed information and to answer more detailed questions that you have. I'm going to start with the presentation. If you could hold your questions to the end, that would be good. But it would be terrible if you're getting lost and you don't let me know, because then we should stop and answer the questions. But we're trying to structure this so that some general information for all of you is in the beginning, and then individual questions at any level can be asked. Here's what I'm going to cover. Our background and our expertise, a definition of inclusive financing, how inclusive financing compares to other models, and highlights from programs in selected states. First, let me say, programs using the PACE system have the lowest startup cost of any program capable of producing comparable results. It reaches renters, other hard-to-reach customers, without requiring subsidies for the most cost-effective upgrades. And PACE programs are capable of achieving unprecedented customer uptake, offer acceptance. All but one of the programs have an offer acceptance rate of over 50%, some as high as 80 or 90. This is critical if you want to make a significant change in contribution to greenhouse gas emissions and climate change, or if you just want to reduce most customers' energy costs. This year marks the 40th year that my partner, Paul Silo, and I have been in the building, energy, and resource efficiency field. It does mean I'm old. Each of us has operated and designed and evaluated energy and resource efficiency programs. I am a program implementer by trade. We started out in Vermont, delivering direct services to low-income weatherization programs, to state and utility programs, both energy audit and arranging services, and utility financing and leasing programs, all before we developed PACE in 1998 to 1999. We've provided direct services to all types of customers, residential, including low-to-moderate-or-average-income customers, small and commercial customers, and municipal governments, including schools and hospitals. And we've worked with PACE to help customers reduce the consumption of all types of energy involved in heating and cooling and other end uses, water and sewer, and renewable energy. The very first PACE customer was the town of Stratford, New Hampshire. They used PACE to implement a very cost-effective street lighting project. The project only cost $13,000 to change and relocate 58 fixtures. The savings were almost $6,300 in annual savings. And if you do the math quickly, it's very close to a two-year payback. But voters turned this project down twice. They didn't want to take on the debt. I won't say what their opinion of the city government was. We will leave that aside. But they also didn't want to change the budget. They didn't trust that they would get the savings that they were being promised. PACE does not require voter approval. It's not a loan. It's not debt. It's just a lower utility bill. And the newspaper article summarizing the first project said, from one of the select board members, "We couldn't have done it without PACE."
Did they have a municipal utility? I'm just curious. Does Stratford have the?
In New Hampshire?
Yeah, in New Hampshire. Was it their own utility, do you remember?
New Hampshire has some co-ops. I don't, if they have a municipal utility, it's smaller than those in Vermont. What is inclusive financing? Inclusive financing allows a utility to invest directly in resource efficiency and efficiency upgrades on the customer side of the meter. You may have heard that called demand-side management, regardless of the customer's income, credit score, or rental, or owner's status. PACE programs are the only examples of inclusive financing. In my talk today, I will use PACE and inclusive financing interchangeably. So what does it do? It allows utilities to invest in money-saving, resource-efficiency upgrades on the customer side of the meter with no upfront payment, no debt obligation. Those who benefit from the savings pay the utility back through a tariffed charge on the utility bill. Tariffed is a fancy word for an approved rate, and it's in the book of rates. But only for as long as the customer occupies the location where the upgrades were installed. When a customer vacates the premises, the payment obligation is automatically assumed by the next owner or occupant at that location, who gets the savings and therefore must pay the program charges. The monthly charge is always significantly lower than the upgrade's estimated savings, and remains on the bills for that location until the utility recovers all its costs. Like a loan, PACE allows for payment over time. But unlike a loan, the PACE customer's obligation to pay ends when occupancy ends, or the product fails and is not repaired. I don't know if you can see this graphic, but this assumes that you can see that thing up there. So, all the way to the left in blue, it says utility. And the way PACE starts is with the utility seeking permission from its oversight body to implement a PACE tariff. It needs to locate, if we go clockwise, the green is the capital provider, needs to locate a source of funding to pay for the upfront costs of the upgrades. Capital provider makes funds available to the utility, who contracts with solution providers. Typically, but not always, a typically, but not always, a program operator, and always contractors to install the upgrades. We're now at "solution providers", which is some color that I'm colorblind and I can't see, and then we're moving over to "location", which is sort of dark tan. The customers, both current and future at the location, get the savings from the upgrades, and they in turn repay the utility for all its costs associated with the upgrades, and that utility then uses those payments to repay the capital provider. So why is PACE important? Why are people like Dr. Hummel running around the country trying to convince you that this is a good thing? Why have Paul and I been doing this for 20 years? Inclusive financing allows utilities to reach all of their customers who are paying for services, including the costs for energy efficiency programs. If you add up all the customers at a utility who have incomes lower than the median or average, everyone who is a renter, everyone who is not creditworthy, customers who require board or voter approvals to increase budgets, or customers who need approvals to take on new debt, or who can't or don't want to take on new debt, at almost all utilities, you'll have a list of more than one-half of a utility's customers. And all utility financing and rebate programs typically are not successful at reaching customers who fall into any of these categories. None of these categories prevent customers from participating in PACE. Any customer in good standing with their utility can participate in a PACE program. They get upgrades at no cost to them. Renters can participate. Below-average-income customers can participate. Municipals, customers, schools, hospital customers can all participate. And they don't need approvals from voters or boards because they're not taking on new debt or changing the budget. Someone earlier talked about equity. And to me, it's an equity issue to offer a program charge to all customers that effectively bars more than half of a utility's customers from participating. So where has it been done? There have been 17 programs in seven states. In Hawaii, the program was a solar hot-water program. In California, the programs have been water-saving programs, things like installing high-efficiency toilets, shower heads, irrigation, for replacing turf with dry irrigation landscaping. Most PACE programs allow customers to save all resources regardless of the resource provided by the implementing utility. Programs have been operated by IOUs, co-ops, and municipal utilities. I'll review the program results from around the country a little later. But the PACE system is implemented, and other states can be instructive. But these examples are not the only way to implement PACE. It's a system. It's flexible. It can be adapted to the needs of any location. I'm now going to discuss the differences between inclusive financing and other types of debt-based financing. Debt-based financing includes on-bill financing, where the capital comes from the utility. It includes on-bill repayment, where the utility puts the charge on the bill, but the capital comes from a third party. It includes PACE, property-assessed clean energy, where payment is with property taxes. And now, we're going to look at the differences, or three types of differences, between PACE and debt-based products. We're going to look at basic structural differences, the differences from customers' perspective, and how these programs impact credit and collection differently. Debt-based. No, you were good. Structure. From a structural perspective, debt-based financing includes consumer loans, leases, and liens. It's governed by the consumer lending laws in the state, and any conflicts are adjudicated in civil courts. Inclusive financing is different. It starts with utility investments on the customer side of the meter. It's governed not by the state financing law, since it's not financing, but by the utility regulations. And issues are resolved by utility regulators or the utility board for utilities that are not regulated by a state or utility regulator. From the customer perspective, debt-based financing is a consumer debt obligation. Individual customers are on the hook with the whole amount of an efficiency upgrade. A borrower must pay off the balance due whenever they leave. If the upgrade fails, they have to keep paying, no matter what. Customers get no assurance from the lender that they will see immediate net savings or that the upgrades will continue to function for the duration of payments. The customer must own the property for debt-based financing. Owners of rental properties typically don't pay utility bills. Renters pay the bills but don't own the property. This is typically called the split incentive issue, a barrier. Neither party has an interest, an incentive, to invest in the building and energy efficiency or even resource efficiency. Inclusive financing involves no new debt to participants. Since the customer does not own the upgrade and the obligation is tied to the location and not a person, there is no debtor. The charge must be significantly lower than the estimated savings. The customer's obligation is only to pay a lower utility bill. Participating customers in a PACE program are assured upgrades will continue to function, and if they don't, payment stops. Any customers eligible, some utilities require them to be current with their utility bills. And for municipalities and industrial customers, and many businesses, not encumbering new debt and not having to change their energy budget eliminates the needs for board or voter approvals. From a credit and collection impact, for debt-based financing, a credit check is typically required, complicates the process, and may prevent some customers from participating. Banks are primarily experts in the use of capital, not energy efficiency. Banks know how to identify solid loans and how to avoid risky investments or credit risks. They are not expert in utility or efficiency operations. Not being experts in utility or efficiency operations means banks may not decide the best investments in efficiency or the best investments. While loan payments may be made with the utility or property tax bills, there's no immediate recourse for non-payment, and collections are resolved through the courts. In most jurisdictions, that's a very time-consuming and costly process. Inclusive financing is again different. No credit checks are required. The utility needs the savings to justify its investment, which ensures expertise will be available to ensure savings. And since inclusive financing is available to ensure savings, there is disconnection for non-payment. Utilities have the highest rate of collections, better than any bank, in large part due to the threat of disconnection of an essential service. So I said earlier, there have been 17 programs in seven states based on the PACE system.
Just let me check here. I think there might be a question about the last slide. Did you want to ask that, Amy?
Do you want to go back to the slide, or?
No, I guess when we're comparing debt-based and inclusive financing, I think the thing that I didn't hear you talk about is administrative fees and interest, which accrue with a debt-based loan. And I'm curious, in inclusive financing, if there's a capital investor, there's typically administrative fees and interest attached somehow.
It's a good question. And it doesn't have a simple answer because there are now 17 utilities that have come up with different solutions. So with a debt-based program, there's usually an origination fee, is what I think you're talking about with a fee, or a processing fee. With PACE, the utilities are already billing customers and having a system for that that's been paid for by all customers. Typically, there may be a program fee, but that may be for program services or unique to the operations. Some utilities charge them, some do not. Interest. Utilities that are doing debt-based, or municipalities doing PACE, have the cost of money is passed on, sometimes with markup, sometimes without, to customers. Utilities in PACE or inclusive financing lets the utility collect all its costs. So if there's interest cost on the money for the utility, there's interest cost that's charged to participants. There are utilities that have used conservation budgets. There's no real interest cost. So there's no interest charge. But if it was a large program, if you were serving a city or your state, there would probably be a cost of money, and the object would be to keep the cost as low as possible through either municipal bonds or something like that. Is that an answer?
Sort of. I guess it helps me understand a bit. Like, when you're talking about an initial capital investment, an upfront investment, I'm trying to understand why they're in it, if there's not any sort of administrative or interest fee that they walk away with.
Well, there are banks that offer no-fee loans. I mean, the reason a banker or a capital provider is in it is they're making a return on their investment. There are some bankers that have other standards that influence their decisions, but it's all about a return on their investment. So I think that some realize that through fees. They can charge a lower interest rate if they're taking money upfront with a fee, points added to the transaction. But we haven't had that happen with PACE yet. Just the nature of the capital providers, the amount of money. We've been able to avoid origination fees. Most of the utilities that are implementing programs have charged what we call a program activity fee because it's not a loan. It's not really interest. It's the fee that the utility needs to charge to recover its interest on the transaction.
But the interest is passed on to the participant?
In those cases, it's passed on to the participant.
Really, my question is, sometimes administrative fees and interest make the programs, if you're not aware of the cost of those extra additional fees that are passed through to the end user.
Yeah, with PACE, the customer sees, this is what you're saving. This is what you're paying. It's supposed to be 80%, well, 25% less than what you're paying, regardless of whether there are fees or costs. That's how the transaction is evaluated. And no transaction can qualify if it doesn't meet those criteria.
That helps. Thanks.
Okay. Is this credit and collections, or? Or on examples? Thank you. Investor-on-utility. Someone asked about investor-on-utilities. The very first utility to play was an investor-on-utility. It's now called Eversource. In 2002, they started their Smart Start program, which originally started as a PACE pilot. It is still operating. It's targeting municipal customers. They have done 269 primarily, but not completely, lighting projects. And they've invested to date $10.8 million. They use conservation funds put in a revolving fund, so they didn't have to charge customers for interest. They did charge them for the possibility of bad debt. It was the very first program started in the country. They've had zero bad debt. So they've expanded their fund by the program activity charge, which could be interpreted as interest. The second utility was in Hawaii, the HECO Companies. Hawaiian Electric Company has three subsidiaries. The only upgrade was solar water installations. It was a three-year pilot, but because of consumer demand, the utilities asked the commissioner if they could do it in two years, and they exhausted the funds in two years. In the second year, an interesting fact was identified by the process evaluator. 74% of the PACE participants previously rejected the same offer that they were offered with the same criteria, with the exception, one was PACE and one was just a rebate. So something was happening. Customers were realizing something. Co-ops. There are five states where activities happened. If you can see the slide, it's Arkansas, Kansas, Kentucky, North Carolina, and New Hampshire did a brief pilot. I'm going to talk about three of these states. In Arkansas, in less than two years, the utility has reached 4% of its customers. It's reached 100% of the multifamily customers who pay for their energy bills. It's reached two schools. And it's achieved a 90% acceptance rate, according to Mark Casey, who I believe may be available to somebody in Minneapolis soon. The next state I'm going to talk about is Kansas. Their program was called House Smart. They too have reached 4% of their customers, and 15% of them were renters. The interesting thing about this, I mentioned earlier, there were no rebates available in Kansas. Customers had copays. 24%, almost a quarter of the upgrade costs, were necessarily in the form of an upfront payment from the customer to the contractor, and yet they had a 70% acceptance rate. So even when there are low rates and some upgrades don't qualify, certainly not the lowest-income customers, but a lot of customers found a way to get the copay paid. Lastly, I'll talk about upgrades to save. What's interesting about that is the ECLIP funding, the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Loan Program from USDA Rural Utility Services. That money is a four-year note that the utility can draw down on with no carrying costs whatsoever. The interest rate is linked to treasury bills and stays the same for the four years, regardless of what happens to the treasury bills. And the utility targeted 104 customers who had been rejected by a loan program. Over 75% of them, as of last year, had accepted a PACE offer. And overall, the utility is claiming an 85% acceptance rate of offers. I'll just briefly cover California. There were three utilities that have done, I'm picking two of them out. Windsor did a program where they tried to do everything. They included water-saving measures and dishwashers and refrigerators. And it was really exciting to work with a utility that wanted to do a very comprehensive program. And if I learned anything, if you have more than one contractor dealing with a customer, and if you have three, if they don't get along perfectly, which is almost impossible, they're all going to look after their own interests, and it's going to be a disaster waiting to happen. Windsor suspended its program for redesign, and they're simplifying it to just water-saving measures and lighting. 3%, they reached 3% of their single-family homes in two years. 38% of their multifamily homes. They were limited by state law to using operating funds, as was the city of Hayward with its Green Hayward PACE program. And Green Hayward PACE is the only program reporting less than a 50% acceptance rate. There's a new act that was passed last year, the Water Bill Savings Act. These utilities and others are hoping that the authority to now form a joint power activity will enable them to borrow money. And they're not going to be limited by operating funds. So what do you do if you're interested? Well, the first thing you do is what you're doing, which is you're getting a study to decide how viable this is for your situation. But if it is determined that this is something you want to proceed with, there are at this point ways that all there are at this point ways that all but one of the utilities use to implement their program. One, we can design a custom program for the utility. Two, we can let a program operator or the utility license the forms, agreements, standard plan, and we provide some consulting hours. And the standard plan is just for residential, so some utilities may not benefit from that. And then you've, those of you who met with Tammy Agard from utility, they are the first, but not necessarily the last, program operator who will be licensed to deliver services to a state or utility with no upfront charge for licensing fees or custom design or anything. They have their system. If it works for your customers, it will be a great option. It will be a great option for small co-ops or small munis who really can't afford costly upfront costs. That's the end of the standard presentation, and I was five minutes over what I wanted. Sorry about that, but there's time for questions if there are any.
Well, we snuck in some questions too, so we took up some of your time for that.
Whatever questions you have. The one thing I can tell you is you've had two other speakers talk about our system, and they are very knowledgeable people. And I should know because I helped work with them and I, they're great folks. But if you have a detailed question about the pays system, if I don't know the answer, it does not exist. So this would be a good time to get those questions.
We'll try to get some good questions going here, and we did bring you in here as much because you've got experience and you're an expert. And, and I, there's, there's probably other, other programs and entities that we could use to do inclusive financing, or we could invent our own, but because of your experience and practice, we thought you'd be a valuable person to come here. I do see some questions. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here today. I did have the good fortune of hearing Harlan last year and really thought we would move, be able to move forward a lot faster than we have so far. So I guess I have the big $100,000 question, which is, what is the problem here? I don't understand what the delay is with the utilities and why they just simply don't want to embrace this as the future. Now, I don't want to call on the utilities and put them on the spot, but what's your read on why this is not happening voluntarily with utilities?
So banks are in the business of not financing energy efficiency, but they're in the business of moving capital and making money on it. Utilities traditionally have seen their role as buying or purchasing or negotiating rights to resources, developing the distribution system in a, in a non-restructured state, and shipping them to customers. And this effort, even though Amory Lovins, back when I was a young man, talked about negawatts and negatherms, and it, it's a different way of thinking about delivering something to customers. And it upsets the apple cart because they're experts. Utilities are experts in the business of getting a resource and delivering it to customers and doing it efficiently, and that's why wherever you go in this country, if you turn on a light switch, most places the lights are going to come on. If you turn on a heater and you run a gas heat home or business, gas will come through. It's a great operating system, and this is a change, and change is hard. Change comes when there's pressure, either from a city council, state government, advocacy groups pressing, and we can tell you that like, you know, or Mark Casey can tell you. Mark Casey may be, if Mark Casey addresses you, he's a utility manager at Washington Electric Cooperative, he can tell you that he's making money on this program. He's running a co-op, so him making money means he's lowering costs for his members. He gets nothing for it. And there are examples of a well-designed pays program that worked with, like Centerpoint Energy says in its webpage, Minneapolis is one of the fastest-growing cities in the country. Well, that means you need more energy, so there's less impact from lost sales, especially if you, but you could eliminate the, the new sales, and it's really no impact to the bottom line. So you're asking people to change, and what you need to do is build the consensus, get the information you need to make sure it's, the study's going to do in participants' interests, and it's not going to impact rate, non-participants, ratepayers really badly, and that the utilities should win. You know, at least, you know, come out ahead, making money, more money on, by operating the program. They may not like any ratepayer impact measure, but even if it's the minimum, even if, like, I think in Arkansas, it was a thousandth or a hundredth of a percent, we're talking almost next to nothing. But that was a forward-thinking utility manager who liked the idea.
Mr. Chair, it was almost embarrassing to hear that Arkansas had done this. When we met with Harlan, that kind of said something to me. I guess the only other thing I'll point out is, we implemented PACE, Property-Assessed Clean Energy Improvements, years ago, after Jeremy Kalin and others in the legislature allowed us to be able to do it. We were one of the first adopters, along with St. Paul, through the Port Authority, and those have been very successful projects in moving commercial buildings into energy improvements. It's not on-bill financing, but it is financing through the Port Authority and the city that is allowed to use energy savings to pay off the capital costs. We already have a model of this that we're using. It's interesting, you say pays and pace, they're very, they sound very similar. They are very similar programs. This should be a very easy step.
The, the difference is fundamental, and, and so. Pace is a debt-based product.
Yeah.
Pays is not. Pays can have disconnection for non-payment, and it has certain assurances. If your program is successful, unlike those in California in the towns that are trying to stop PACE from operating in their borders, that means to me that you've somehow or other built-in consumer assurances so that people aren't getting hurt and losing their homes.
Well, I don't believe that we should use a debt-based model here. To be fair, the whole bonus of this is it's on-bill financing. But we have been a leader in trying to figure out how to use, how to creatively use capital in order to do energy improvements already as a city, and I would think if we could do it for businesses, we should be jumping to do it for residents, both renters and homeowners.
And you might get more businesses with a debt, non-debt, debt product where there, it's not on their books.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially the bigger customers.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question that I think is more appropriate for our city staff, if that's okay at this time, and then maybe there are more questions. I'm just trying to understand, so a lot of the examples that have been given range everything from like a dishwasher to upgrading a city's streetlight system, and when we think about using this tool in the city of Minneapolis or in the city of St. Paul or statewide, what kinds of, can you help us understand with more detail how we'd particularly be targeting the households that we talked about at the beginning as the impetus for wanting to use this kind of financing tool? And then are we talking about using this like in an individual household unit or at the building scale or at the city scale? And then could you also help us understand what role the city would be playing in terms of our financial obligations? Are we participating as like a guarantor of, of the loans or? So that's a lot of questions, so maybe I'll just pause there and see if you can answer those.
I, I think that, to me, there are, those are a lot of questions, a lot of very good questions, and that's, a lot of those questions will be answered during the study, I think, with a pretty robust stakeholder engagement process as well, so that we can take into consideration really all the ways that this could benefit and how it can also, how a pays system or a similar system could really be a key component of an ecosystem of our overall environmental and sustainability efforts. One of the things that I think is particularly interesting about pays is that we, as a city, there's been an estimate that about 25% of residential homes do not have exterior wall insulation. That is a issue, obviously for many, many different reasons, but I think that that is one of those measures, which really is just screaming out for more work to be done on, and I think this potentially could be a really important tool for addressing that. And to create, again, a robust ecosystem around this, I think we're going to have more and more opportunities to do targeted outreach. Obviously, we've identified green zones as, as areas for targeted outreach, but I think the city, we're going to start having more resources, more resources at our disposal to do that targeting. For instance, the franchise fee budgets that were passed, well, the ordinance amendment was passed last year and that the budget this year now reflects that and reflects programming. We're helping to pay for more home energy squad visits, and with the city now helping and providing assistance to homeowners and some resident, or some rental customers, well, we're going to have more information about who does and doesn't have wall insulation, attic insulation, items like that. So then we're going to be able to come in and talk to those same folks we've assisted in with another program and say, by the way, there's another program, a financing tool that we could help, we could bring to bear. And then also, I think, Green Business Cost Share Program, which is now expanding to green housing. Cost share is another vehicle to reduce the initial cost of a project, and then maybe even less has to potentially go on to a, a pays-based system. So I think we're going to learn a lot more, we're going to answer a lot of those questions that you had during the study, and that we're going to continue to kind of weave it into a lot of these other programs that we're starting to get up and running.
Can I ask a follow-up question then? So just imagine we had an apartment building where the residents somehow got together and decided they wanted to upgrade the insulation, or maybe the owner did. How does that work? So how does this building use the system in a way that's different than today's system? So is someone paying the contractor? Who is paying the contractor? Where does that money come from? And then I understand that it's being paid through the utility fee, but can you explain to us the difference between the two systems in terms of the ability of those renters or their property owner to insulate a building, for example?
Okay. Can I go back to the question that Luke did not answer first? So you asked a really good question, which is what's the liability for the city here? And someone should answer that. No, I don't know what you'll do if you do something like pays but isn't pays, but I'm not responsible for like other things. But in our system, you have zero liability. So basically, no one's promising anybody savings. They're promising people that credible savings estimates are, have been done. These are the estimated savings. These are the measures, so hopefully they're proven measures where you can trust the savings estimates. And the utility is not promising the upgrades will stay and work forever. What they're promising is if the upgrades fail, the payments will be suspended, and then if they're fixed, the charges will continue, and if they're not, they won't. No liability for the city. Is that a straight answer? Okay. Multifamily building, landlord, tenants who pay their bills. Let's make it complicated. I was a landlord in New York City, so now we're talking about another area of my expertise. So there were common areas where I was paying for lighting. There was parking where I was paying for lighting, and there were laundry machines where I was paying for the electricity that operated the machines. Someone does an assessment, someone competent, let's say, and they basically figure out, these are the things that are influenced in each unit by cooling and heating and lighting. Tenant's responsible for paying the share of 80% of their savings over 80% of their life while they're a tenant in that building to pay for those upgrades. Um, they shouldn't pay for my benefit. Yeah, so I'm paying as the landlord. I'm, I'm becoming a pays participant in my own building as the owner. And so on my central meter, I'm paying for the lights in the common areas and the parking lights, and I'm paying for the electricity if there was something. In, in a multifamily building, it is possible that a washing machine will qualify depending on water rates or whatever. I may pay for new washing machines. I may get me out of a contract with a vendor who's doing it, and they're making all the money, and I could turn my washing machines into a profit center. Depends on how the numbers play out. Well, what happened is someone, either a contractor would come in, an advocacy group, you have several, several groups in the back of the room there, would knock on the door and say, we could do this in this building. They probably would start with tenants and get tenants really excited. They would call the building owner and say, how would you like your tenants pay for upgrades in your building? And you pay nothing. It, it worked in some states, you know, it worked in Kansas where 15% of the landlords paid for improvements of the participants. So there were 2,000 projects, 15%, 300 of them were, I guess, rental properties. It worked in Arkansas where 100% of those buildings were done. But basically, an offer gets made that's supposedly debt-free, risk-free, and like, why would you not say yes?
And then who's literally writing the check to like Sears for the washing machines and the guy who's installing them?
Okay. So hopefully, there's one contractor, because I said in my presentation earlier, you want to have hell to pay. You have multiple contractors, and I do mean that. So try to be elegant in your program design. The utility would be making the investment. They would write the check either from their funds or from a third-party funds or from ECLIP, depending on the type of utility, and they would be getting all the collections back. They would do the billing. They would own the measures on paper until such times as they were all paid off. If they didn't want to add the debt, they could lease the measures, but then they lose the tax advantages of the investment. That's a business decision somebody much higher up in the food chain than I am would make.
And then maybe you want to leverage on this, but, and a lot of these improvements, that time that it takes to see those savings isn't very long. So we know from our, the city of Minneapolis is ourselves paying for the upgrade of all of our streetlights to more energy-efficient lights, and that will be dramatic cost savings over time after that initial investment is made. And it doesn't take us very long and years to catch up to the cost savings. So you're saying that something like utility has the capital available to invest in these things in the beginning?
I'm saying that a utility can get the funds, or the advocates can get the funds and raise them for the utility. Money, again, as long as the money's a solid investment, people will put the money up. What's different about this, and what's different about you guys doing it on your own as a city, is the investment is structured so that the city starts saving money from day one or year one. So you would see the savings right away. You would save more, obviously, once the payment period ends, but you would see savings from day one. You wouldn't wait time to see the savings. Or the pen, the project wouldn't pencil, and then you'd have to do a co-pay inside with that was worth it.
I think Councilmember Jenkins was next.
Thank you, Councilmember. My question is somewhat related. You know, I get homeowners, but what happens if a tenant moves in the middle of repayment? Does it follow them? Does it stay on the utility bill? How does that work?
Great question. Very helpful. So the tenant's only obligation is to pay for the charges at the unit where the upgrades were made. Let's say the walls were insulated, big problem. Let's say a new, let's say there was an inefficient system heating their unit and a more efficient unit was put in. Lights were done, showerheads were done. While they're there, their job is to use them and get savings. When they leave, their obligation ends. That's it. They don't, doesn't go with them, they're, they're done. They then go to a new unit or buy a house or whatever. If they're smart, they'll get pays done in their new house or their new apartment if they can. But the charge is, or stay with the location. That's what it means when it was, stays with the location. It stays with that apartment until the utility has collected 100% of its costs associated with the program. Is that clear enough, or do I need more?
That, that's the answer, but do the new tenants, do they have a right to understand this arrangement? I mean...
Two things can happen. One thing, the landlord does their job. They signed an agreement promising that they would disclose the charge. Let's say they do that. The tenant is taking the unit, knowing there'll be a charge on their gas or electric bill, and that the total bill savings on either their gas or electric bill or both bills will be larger than the charge by 25% or more. It's a good deal. They may say, no, I don't want to pay a charge to Centerpoint. I hate my gas utility. They may say, I love it, I'd like paying less. I don't know what will happen. Everywhere that it's happened, there hasn't been a problem. Everywhere that it's happened, there hasn't been a problem. I can tell you that much. Let's say the owner doesn't disclose the obligation. The owner has promised to accept 100% of the liability for their failure to disclose. There are mechanisms in our system where you will know whether they disclosed it or not. You will have written proof, signed by the owner and distributed to the distribution utility. And then the customer can decide, do I really mind paying a lower bill? In which case, they have recourse. They can go to the courts or to arbitration, if you accept arbitration as one of the resources, and go after the business owner. And they could say, well, I wouldn't have moved here. It cost me this much money to move, had to change my job, I lost this. It could get very expensive for a landlord and they probably will not fail to disclose more than once.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Former Councilmember Stark.
Used to these mics. I'm just curious, with the programs that you've been involved in, what the max payback period has been for some of those improvements? The ones, the examples that you gave sounded like kind of the typically fastest payback items, lighting, low-flow showerheads, et cetera.
So one of the things the study will show you, and show you specifically, if you manage to talk them into doing Minneapolis-St. Paul as part of this, but one of the things that will show you is what's the ideal payment duration. What we've seen is that for the solar program in Hawaii, the only way I could get it to pencil and the only way that they were willing to do it was with 12-year payment term. They looked at the cost, the savings, the interest they were going to charge, and they said, this will work. And so that's what they did. In New Hampshire, they had a floating term and they, most of the projects had four or five-year paybacks and they used an eight-year term for most of them. There were a couple of utilities who didn't want any of the savings upfront. Not only are there some voters who don't trust their governments, there are governments who don't want to give savings to their voters and have an expectation that they could take the money and spend it. So they, they did a 0% savings, figuring they wouldn't have to change their budgets and that the project would work. They were pretty confident in the savings because it was lighting for the most part in New Hampshire, which is lots in, lots out, multiple times rate, hours of use. So eight years, New Hampshire. I think one of, either Kentucky or Roanoke in North Carolina, used a 10-year payment term. Arkansas is using a 12-year payment term. Again, they looked at sort of the numbers and it made sense. The, the rule was 80% that, so that they're saying that their upgrades were going to last, I think, 15 years and so they could do a 12-year payment term. And, and that they, the numbers penciled that there would be the smallest number of copays. My guess is that you'll probably be, if you're looking, you'll probably start with a 10 or 12-year term unless you do some special projects like sewers, if there are sewer plants that would benefit. High, high-use projects may, may tend to have shorter payback terms. And if, for invest, and if you decide you're serving industrial customers, trying to keep them and keep them operating, whatever, those projects tend to have much shorter payment, payback. And so it's, it's an art. You know, I think, you know, if I were selfish, I'd say that's why I get paid the big bucks. But since I don't get paid the big bucks, I'd say, let's hope your study's really good and, and it tells you what you need to do.
I, thank you. I assume in the, from the places, there's also been limits to the amount of upfront capital that the utilities involved have. So say you get a customer, so you get 90% of your customers wanting to sign on right away. Utility's been able to do all of that work within a reasonable period of time? I'm trying to imagine the, the scale of doing something like this in a larger city.
That's a great question. So Kansas, one of the longer-running programs, 2008 to now, 10 years, they just had their 10-year anniversary, just reached 4%, which Washtata reached in, when they have, one has 50,000 customers and the other has 6,400 customers. So Washtata reached 4%, which per capita is a huge investment for them, in two years. They borrowed the money and they borrowed from their financing agent, CFC. It's a cooperative financing corporation. Midwest Energy decided to take advantage of available capital, grants and special loans and operating funds, and it's taken them longer to get to the same place. I would say Roanoke's a good example. They decided that they wanted to have a certain number of jobs in four years. And so when they did their E-Clip application, they got like $7 million, which in the beginning, it went very slowly, but they're now ramping up since they've hired a utility to be their program operator and they're on target to meet that obligation. So it's really a question if the utility really wants to, or their customers, or the politics, the commission, or the city council, or whatever body has enough pull. You know, you, you set your targets and if the studies, feasibility study indicates the market is there, since we're getting, you know, 50 to 80% to 90% offer acceptance rates, the only issue is going to be the capital that you make available. And that's one of the reasons why the people who have been urging this study should be commended. It's the right step. It's the step that Dr. Hummel convinced Roanoke Electric to do and Arkansas Washtata Electric Cooperative to do. And it's been done for Appalachian Electric up in Tennessee, and they're going to be moving forward with a program this year. And I think if, if the study's comprehensive enough, you will find opportunities for any city that would be a wise investment if you're interested in climate change or lowering certain customers' bills. While they pay for those, for the savings out of their future savings.
Thank you, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you. Alan, I want to thank you so much for coming and talking to us about this. I, like Councilmember Gooden, don't know why we're not doing this. It's something that we've, we've touched on a couple of the reasons. We've really focused on kind of the environmental impacts, but this hits so many other of our city goals, like affordable housing and more importantly, you know, letting us really focus on what we can do for all Minneapolisites lead, you know, much, much more comfortable, much, and have opportunity for an extraordinary life. One of the things I'm excited about this is not just the targeting, the targeting that we can do for low-income families, but also how this will hit, those are also the areas we need to focus on. We, you heard a little bit about one area we need is to make sure we have more insulation in a lot of the, kind of the low-income multifamily. And that for us, that should be something we should be taking on right away. And I think this helps us get there. The technology definitely is in a spot where we can see that return on investment, that it makes a lot of sense, that it really is a no-brainer. So I'm excited to see what the study says. I think that that's something we can really focus on, how we hit multiple goals through the city through this.
So if it's okay, going to do what the speaker's told not to do, which is to sort of disagree with the key people in the front of the room. If I could urge anything to you, having been the one person I know in this room has run both a low-income program for a region in my state and run the state's program, which was a privilege that I managed to get strictly by accident. I got called up and said, we have a crisis. Can you stop what you're doing and come here and help us? Don't limit your program to low income. It's, it's not a low-income program. It's a customer program. If you want to make it low and mod, low to moderate, low to average, there are so many people who can't be helped, who are just out of limit with low-income eligibility criteria that it's, they need as much help. Whoever decided this person's low income and this person's not, never talked to people and never found out about wealth versus income. And I can tell you horror stories about things that kept me up at night and complaining to my spouse. The other thing that I would urge you to consider is goals are great things and numbers are great things, but if the numbers tell you you can't do your goal, talk to someone who can think outside the nine dots. I don't know if everybody knows the nine dots, but think broadly. There are ways to get what you want, which may not be just straight pays. Maybe you need subsidies or maybe you need to harness other resources, but be creative. You know, there, my partner wanted me to say, we had never found a utility that we could not come up with a measure, programs that they would want to run and, and with rates as low as five cents a kilowatt hour in Missouri and, and luckily, it seems high now, but then it would seem really, really low, which was a dollar a therm. And so I know that things can work and I know that there are creative ways of husbanding resources, either from workforce development or subsidies or, you know, we could, you could get a room full of smart people and they could come up and help you solve that problem. Use the study, but don't be limited by it.
I thank you. I couldn't agree more. I think my main focus is that we have areas that we're already spending resources on and this might be a nice compliment to make sure that our scarce resources are going further.
I agree.
And I think I have a few more questions.
Please.
One thing I'm curious about, we hear from the utilities sometimes that this is going to be really difficult. We don't understand how it's going to work with our billing process and how we handle this with our software. And are there resources? Are there places where people can go and say, we solved this problem easily here, here's how we did it? Where they could learn and they could benefit from and maybe get some services so they can get over that leap?
Yeah. That's a great question. I will say that's not the first time from an investor on utility I have heard those questions. They were more made as statements, but to me. But first of all, there are 17 utilities, 16 of which use their existing billing systems to run programs in one case that have lasted from 2002 to now. And Midwest Energy has 2,000 jobs outstanding, some of which have, obviously, the books have been closed on, using their existing billing system. So there are resources like talking to the utility managers there. At all of those utilities, somebody said, it's going to cost too much to work on our billing system. And one utility manager at one of the smallest utilities, not the smallest anymore, but the town of Windsor had 8,000 customers. He got a little thing from us in our IP that said, this is how you should change your billing system. And he went to his billing vendor and said, I want a price. How much would it cost to do this? And it was 40, less than $40,000. And when he figured out $40,000 amortized over the life of the program and all the people would be helped and getting the data so that every time a customer called, his people would know if they'd participated, how long the payment term had left to go, what measures were installed, and they could track each customer's payment history. That struck him as valuable. So can an IOU get it done for $30,000, $40,000? Probably not because people know their IOU is double the charge. But even if they double it, it's still less than 100 grand. And when you're talking about utilities that have millions of customers, it's not really that much money.
Then another thing I'm really interested in is, is seeing if we can have a program where a single renter in a duplex or triplex or fourplex or a larger building could participate in a program like this without needing everybody else in the building to go along with it or even the building owner necessarily. Is there, is there any programs that offers anything like that?
One, I don't think any program will allow anybody to do something in a building without the permission of the building owner. As a former landlord, I'm glad of that, but it's certainly been a problem as a program implementer. In terms of, Kansas had a lot of single-family homes that were rented, so duplexes should be relatively easy to do. You could, you could literally work on one half of a home and, and treat it as a conditioned, unconditioned space and so treat it, insulate it like, like that's the great outdoors where my neighbor lives. And you could, you could know what the savings are and you could, you could build that up. The more units there are, the more complicated it comes, unless we're talking about like replacing a heating system. If someone has electric baseboard heat in a unit and they go to a heat pump, one person can do it, half the units can do it, it wouldn't make any difference. Have the information and, and you could track, track it versus the historical billing and then it's just a question to do the numbers pencil.
I actually think a lot of the duplexes in Minneapolis have two furnaces and two water heaters and things like that, so some of those...
Even easier.
Yeah. The other question is, because there are some renewable investments people make and they don't need to make them on their building. We have something called community solar. Has anybody used this as a way that people could invest and participate in community solar?
So you're the chair. I'm just going to let you know that my time is almost out or it's past, but here we go. This is an area that I have been investing the last 10 years of my life. So community solar is not, I have not figured out a way, that means I haven't figured out a way, to pencil it as an essential services charge because it's owned by usually the utility and not by the customer. And it doesn't, it's not meant to transition to successor customers. So I don't see how I can call it an essential utility charge. On the other hand, rooftop solar would seem to lend itself to that, except it doesn't pencil either. We have sought, we have a utility that's interested and they're willing to co-match $10,000 of the study and we're seeking the other 50 that we need. I think it may be possible to do rooftop solar without net metering with battery backup that would act as a way for a utility to minimize customers without being, being without power for short outages. That would also eliminate demand a little bit. They could draw the demand of peak hours if that was all they were permitted to do. And that the customer would have use of the solar and we might, if we could harness the tax credits, depreciation and other values, sometimes there are community rebates, state rebates. I think that may be possible. If the grant comes in, it's going to be big if it works. I don't know that it'll work. I just like, it's been, someone called me up and, and said, why can't we do this? And so I think we might, but we're waiting. But good luck with community solar. Somebody on our, the team that invited me here suggested there may be a way to structure it as a essential service. I'd be happy to work with them at no charge if they could help me figure it out.
I think folks could get very excited about it if they could somehow...
But, but the rooftop solar really strikes me as, like, imagine if you put it on a low-income person's home or a moderate-income person's home, that would change things.
That would be wonderful too, absolutely. I think we have, I know that we're late. We have one more question and I want to make an announcement. Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to quickly highlight, and I appreciate that you brought this up, that it seems that if we are really intending to help the low-income households and households of color in our community with this program, it's going to need to be carefully designed. And so I'm really looking forward to the results of the study to highlight not just the energy piece, but also if we can design a program that will help those households and not just sort of talk about that as the frame and then, you know, and then kind of like, hope it works out, but to be really intentional in that piece of it. So thanks.
One thing that most people who are not program implementers do not know, that this is a gift. So someone here should remember this. If you really care about reaching low-income, moderate-income renters and you're in charge or have access to being in charge of where the capital goes, you could simply say to the contractor workforce, you may not do any income homes before you do 50 low-income homes, 50 multifamily homes. That's never been done because the contractors don't want to be burdened with where they have to work. But if you guys are creating this program by your efforts and your sweat and tears and that is some of the people behind me, there's no stopping you, if you insist, on making it happen. And I will tell you that every place there have been programs developed, including Hawaii, that all said, this is for hard-to-reach customers, there's not a single stipulation about how the funds get used. It is no surprise that... It is no surprise that contractors would rather work for rich homes with beautiful views and swimming pools they can wash off in later and ignore homes where, you know, it's in a bad part of town and it's messy and the people are working three jobs just to get by. And, you know, they don't speak the language the way I would like. You got to insist, that's where they go first.
Well, I sure appreciate you being here. I just want to note that that you stressed how usually when these things happen, it's a big community effort. And I I think this community, we have many people in the community that are concerned about it. And I want to let people know that this discussion will be going on today even. There'll be more discussions in City Hall, but also this evening at six thirty tonight at the Can Do offices at thirty seven fifteen Chicago Avenue South. We've got our friends from Can Do, the Community Power, Sierra Club, MN, MN three fifty, EcoFaith and Minnesota Inter Faith, Power and Light are co-hosting a discussion on this very topic. I guess there's going to be food there as well, six thirty to eight P M. So hopefully, there'll be more discussion there and then people will keep carrying this forward and bringing it forward. Thanks to everybody who showed up from everywhere here and also saw this at home. And that's it for today. I guess, I guess we have to adjourn because we're in this room, but I'll just say the study session's over.